How you doing Phil?
Where's Dave? It looks like he down in the bunker.
Not the lead bunker.
Oh, okay. The brass bunker. I see Columbia is missing you. Chief. Another car chase this morning.
I'll get over it. I'll get by just fine.
Hello. Hello.
I figured out the trick there Mike. Don't use the reminder. I'll take two.
That's the new gold.
Everybody sat up straight. The chairs here.
Everybody see Daniel's email he just sent?
Yeah, I did.
I saw Daniel's email. Can you tell me is my audio working?
It is Tony and his email just said that he wasn't going to be able to make the meeting which he had told us ahead of time. You're muted now.
Well, my daughter is in Hawaii today. So I sent her a picture of our snowy lawn today and so I went and got my snow shovel and reminded her to get her sunscreen.
She must be jealous.
Tony, is she quarantined there? They weren't they mandatorily quarantining people for two weeks or does she live there?
Well, she doesn't live there. She just arrived there last night on vacation with four other friends. Their temperatures were taken before they got off the airplane. None of her or friends had any fever or signs, so they're just on their own. They're spending a couple of weeks at one of their friend's house. When MIT shut down, her and her four friends, they went to Mexico where one of the kids lives for three weeks. Then they went to Louisiana where the other kid lived, spent three weeks there.
Hey guys. Not to interrupt, but we're getting right to start and I did want to remind everybody that we are live on the internet and on YouTube and it's recorded forever. So focus on our agenda, please.
Set up straight Cory.
I am.
Right.
Okay, we're getting ready to start if everybody would mute and then the chairman.
Mike, if I can ask just one question. I see Daniel Mahoney's name on the screen here and maybe I misread his email, but is he joining us by audio then or Daniel if you can hear?
He says that he is listening in.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
I'd like to call the February 17th special board meeting to order. Adam Clark, could you call the roll?
Thank you for unmuting me. My mouse is not working. We're having three different monitors. Yes, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Bear?
Present.
Commissioner Walls? Mr. Kennedy?
Present.
Commissioner Duckham?
Muted.
Commissioner Duckham?
Here.
Commissioner Tompkins? Commissioner Mahoney?
Present, but really just to listen in.
Commissioner Williams? I'm having a major delay.
There's a lot of people on the meeting.
Commissioner Elwell?
Here.
Chairman Chatwell?
I'm here.
Six commissioners present.
Mr. Chairman, can I make a suggestion for commissioners that have laptops? Just a trick. If you have a laptop with a spacebar, you can either mute it by pushing the spacebar or unmute it. Instead of having to try and find the microphone on screen makes it a lot easier.
Doesn't work with the iPad keyboard though, huh?
I don't think so.
So I entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Chairman, can I make an amendment to the agenda? You're muted there, but I think I see a saying go ahead.
Go ahead.
It would be to add acceptance of the resignation of Commissioner Tompkins.
We will move, we'll move item five down and make it six. Any other adjust additions? Hearing none. All in favor, show by hand. That's okay. I showed six Amanda. He raised his hand. Mike, if you'd like to take over.
Thank you. The see here really from our perspective, I wanted to like it turn their volumes down just a little. The, I wanted to have this meeting, one agenda item primarily because I want to, the board to be thinking about this for next Tuesday. And I know no one likes to walk in cold and make decisions, especially decisions of magnitude and I can appreciate that. What we have here is a situation where our budget has been significantly impacted by the events, obviously. No surprise, I suppose for anyone. We have been crunching numbers, looking across the county at various departments and revenue streams. And right now, by the end of this month, we will be have lost $500,000 in revenue. And as you know, we operate like a business. We try to make sure our expenses do not exceed our revenues. And that is becoming more and more difficult as the years go by. As such, we're looking at here, just to give you some sense of it, the, the direct general fund impact is almost 400,000 of that. The remainder is that spread across various departments that have their own millages and things like that. And that does not include JDOT. JDOT is looking at this month about $150,000 reduction is the anticipated direction there for revenue. So it doesn't take too many months before this starts to have a significant impact on the county's budget. And what we've done from the beginning of this is said to our employees that we value you. You guys are what makes, makes Jackson Jackson. You're what makes the work get done. You're the frontline. And as such, we have continued to pay folks regardless of whether they were first responders or, or working from home or frankly at home because the work they do, they can't do from home and they can't be in the office doing it. Non-essential type work, if you will. And, and we have, we believe that's important to honor that commitment. But at some point, it becomes a situation where we can no longer afford to continue that practice. And so we've been looking at the numbers. The county has about 700 employees. Most of which are working. Most departments are providing the essential services for sure. Some a little more than that. Of course, some of our internal services have never really stopped writing services from HR perspective. To some degree, their workload perhaps went up, given the demands and needs of our employees. And the stresses that this type of situation puts on people. The same is true of, you know, be it finance, paychecks, all that sort of thing needs to be processed. And so the workload there hasn't stopped at all. But nonetheless, we need to look at what we can do to curb the expenditure. So I have been talking to every department head elected official the last few days. And the idea, with the idea being that those employees that are not essential that are home, perhaps we could furlough them. Now, we've bounced around the different language, different words, have different meanings like layoffs, furlough, those sort of things. And there are legal aspects to, to all of those. We've settled on furlough. Because furlough will also allow them to be, to collect unemployment, to be eligible for the stimulus that the federal government has provided for unemployment, additional $600. And it does yet not affect our pension plan. For instance, if we were to say we're going to do just a layoff. Well, technically per the pension plan, those employees are no longer employed by the county and it creates all kinds of problems. So we'd end up having to change the language of the pension plan, which is, you know, you're open a can of worms there. That's a whole lot of, a whole nother avenue of complication. But we believe that with furlough, we can meet all those needs. We can meet the needs of the employee who is at home not being paid, as well as honor the legal requirements that we have internally with some of our other benefits and things like that. Now, so in discussing with all these different department heads and like officials, basically, we have not tried to force any, any particular plan or number of employees or percentage of employees or anything like that. We have basically said, you know your department better than any of us. You know the level of services that you're providing, that you need to provide, what essential services look like in your particular department. And so we've really left it up to, up to each department head elected official to make those calls. And what I've been doing was calling them all, talking to them and then letting them explain to me what they believe that need is or is not. My MSU cup. But at any rate, and in doing that, there's been a number of departments that have been very, let's put it this way, they're in a good position to where they can ask their employees, who would like to voluntary take a furlough. It's because that's our first approach. Who is, who's uncomfortable coming in or who's in a position to swap outing potentially with one person or another, somebody who needs to be at home with their children or someone who needs to be at home for medical reasons or they're a high-risk person. There's a lot of variables there. So we really have asked each department to talk to their employees, work it through and tell us how many people and ultimately which people, because various, you know, they all have different rates of pay depending on what union or what their classification is. They all have various costs associated with their benefits as well. You know, health insurance, full family, one person, two-person family. It all affects the rates and everything that we pay. And another thing that, that I'm going to want, ultimately the board has to decide and I would, my, my, my plan is to ask this of you Tuesday night. And that is for those people who choose to furlough or who find themselves in furlough situation. Again, they're eligible for unemployment and that stimulus money. But their health insurance, we want to continue to cover their health insurance. They're still a valued employee, a member of our organization. And we hope to bring them back as soon as possible, but we don't want to see a lapse in health insurance. Currently, we pay 8% and they pay 20% of the premium for health insurance. And so what I would be asking Tuesday night is for the board to vote to, to allow the county to pay 100% while they're on furlough. Now, and I'll provide you a lot more numbers and stuff for the Tuesday night, but I would just give you some food for thought on that. A single employee is $59 a pay is what their proportion is of that premium. And that's for an HMO. We have Blue Cross. If it was a PPO, it's only $19. Now, a two-person employee, their portion that they're 20% for HMO is $142 versus $61 for PPO. And then a full family person is HMO $178 and a PPO is $91. And there's some vision and dental in there and it varies accordingly, the high being $63, the low being 21. So what we'll do is, and hopefully I'll have some, literally I'll have some of the positions identified and names and able to really put actual numbers to those positions and do the math as to how much that is. What we're talking about day here today is more conceptual. We, we want to move forward with doing that work, finding those employees, determining which ones working with the department heads and elected officials. So that we can figure out what the savings would be, share with the board the number. We know the number is a significant number. The average employee wage, so you know. So gross, what we did was, just to give you a sense of the number. We took our la, our first quarter and took all the paychecks we issued and we basically added that up and added up the total pay and then averaged it. So the average gross check that went out on a pay period was $1,772. So you would basically in essence, if we were to furlough someone, we would say on average $1,700, almost $1,800 a pay period per person. Except for the fact that we would hopefully add in, add back in the health insurance premium, that 20%, put that back in there. We believe it's the right thing to do. We believe it'll save the county significant dollars. And the duration, what we're looking for is we're really looking for when, when the governor allows us to bring employees back and reopen our services. We'd bring those employees back. So, and if it, if it is a gradual process, which may very well be, well, we would bring the employees back who can work safely, providing the services that we, that we can provide safely. So some people would be on furlough longer than others if it worked out like that. The bottom line is we will save significant dollars by moving to a furlough. I believe most of our employees would not be harmed, given the amount of the, what is it, 6 unemployment plus $600. That can be as much as $900 a week. You know, it's $1,800 if you look at the gross and our average is only 1772. So it's, it's in the ballpark. It'll be, depends on the employee, obviously. Questions? Doug? Yeah. You're gonna call it.
David, go ahead. Guys, ladies, what I'd like to do is treat this as a study session, so don't hesitate to raise your hand. We'll keep answering questions as long as it takes to get all the correct answers. And I need to let everyone know I made a mistake at the beginning of the meeting, first time in my history, of course. I messed up on public comment and we'll catch it at the end of the meeting. I apologize. David Elwell.
Mike, are we just going to ask if you have any idea of how many employees would want to take a voluntary?
We do not have an idea just yet. We, I've asked everyone to meet with their employees, speak with them and explain what we're proposing and get some numbers together. I believe we have upwards of 150 people that are non-essential at home. So I would hope that many of those would be eligible for the furlough.
Phil? Michael?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, what do we get? Is you, do you have a stop plan where they, we say, okay, that's enough? Or what are you going to do if, like everybody from the road commission left?
Oh, no, no, no. This, we would ask for volunteers, but clearly you cannot allow everyone to, to do that. We would have to maintain essential services. And nor do I, would I expect everybody to want to do that. But it's, it's up to each department's management, elected official to make the determination who can or cannot, who is eligible. And I would also add too, that I don't see this as an open-ended. I'm looking here that this would not take effect until probably the first week of May and we need to, you know, try to give, you know, give proper notice and all these kind of things. We have union contracts and things that we need to try to deal with. We don't want to discard those type of things. And, and we want to, you know, make sure we work it through, talk it through with all the employees and their leadership as well. So I'm envisioning that, it depends on what happens at the legislature, what, how long this continues. But if it goes through the whole month of May, so be it, at the end of that month, I would expect that, in fact, probably our meeting, our meeting is probably the 20th or something like that. I don't remember what the date is in May for our, our Tuesday night meeting. But depending on, at that time, I would think that we would want to take a look, evaluate and say, are, are we willing to extend it beyond May if it were to go beyond May? Or, or not. There's, but it's, it's something that it's, a lot of this, the information changes day to day, so we will be flexible and try to honor our, our commitment to our residents who utilize our services.
Mike?
Sir.
And I assume you're very.
Go ahead Phil.
Phil, you're gonna mute or you have something to say?
Have you kind of? No, are you, have you fell out the labor unions to see what their take is on this or that to be done yet?
They've been, there's been some communication going back and forth. I wouldn't say that we're all in agreement on everything at this point, no.
Mike, I know there are certain departments where the majority of the employees are working and a few employees have just chosen because they they're afraid for their health. Certain people have chosen to just stay home when the rest of their department is showing up for work. Those individuals should definitely be on the furlough. Because they pretty much furloughed themselves already. And then I got a question relative to kind of the end of your opening presentation. You were talking about that the, you talked about eight, close to $18,000 pay per person per pay period. And somehow you came up with that, was it unemployment plus something else? They're going to be pretty much at the same level?
Well, what, what I'm understanding in unemployment is that unemployment, I think the maximum is, is something less than $400. If anybody knows the exact number, 360 maybe, something. And then the Fed, they're offering, let's see, six, an additional $600 per week. I think that goes through July. That they're eligible for that. So, you know, 600 and 300 makes 900 and double it because it's a two-week pay period. That's where I come up with the 18. And the actual 1772 literally comes right off our payroll services and I just took the quarterly remittance and divided it into the number of checks that were issued. That's where I come up with that average.
Okay, so the less than 400 normal unemployment plus the 600 additional Okay, so the less than four hundred normal unemployment plus the six hundred additional temporary employment. You're at nine hundred, uh, a pe- a pay period. That's where that number came from?
Uh, uh, that's a week.
Yes.
But, um, but yeah, that's where I got the number, cause, uh, I, you know, I, uh, unemployment, uh, varies by how much one makes, I believe. And I'm not a hundred percent sure how it all works, but I know that, uh, there's a variable there. So I just used the three hundred plus the six hundred. The six hundred, I guess, is a given, a flat amount regardless of their pay.
Okay, and the contributions to their pension plan and their health insurance? Um, if they're on layoff, they wouldn't get that. If we put them on furlough, they will get that. What does that cost the county?
The furlough, the will, the. W- we would continue to honor all of our regular contributions. It would depend on, uh, whether they are a DB. Whether they're, they are a DC, you know, those kind of things. If they're on furlough on DC, obviously, they wouldn't be receiving any money from us. And, um, cause they're not receiving a paycheck from the county. It's the twenty percent co-pay of the health insurance premium that I'll be talking about Tuesday night. And I'll bring, uh, uh, a staff report showing all the math and the numbers on that, and, uh, you'll have that up and look at that.
Okay, so the people that are in, uh, private sector employment and are laid off. They're not continuing to get their health insurance paid or any retirements paid. But the people in the private sector will still be paying the taxes so that the public employees get all their stuff paid. Am I saying that correctly?
Uh, well, I can't speak to what the private sector is or isn't doing, but, uh, the latter part, yes, uh, people would continue to pay their property taxes and things. Corey, I believe was, was up next, then probably Darius was in.
Okay, um. My question is. I've been hearing, we're speaking about the private sector, people having all kinds of nightmares. Getting, getting through for unemployment in the first place. There's. Problems with the software, all kinds of backlogs, obviously it got flooded. Can they, can, what, if we decided to do this, so we moved forward on Tuesday night and we gave an effective date that the furlough would begin. In essence, could they, they get the ball rolling with that system prior so that there's not a lapse in time that they don't get a paycheck?
I would, uh, well, first, uh, uh, upon board approval, uh, voluntary furlough, they could start. I would think, uh, as soon as supervisor, their supervisor, uh, permits, it could be the next day for that matter. Um, from my perspective, that's, um, that's a savings for the county. Um, the, um, but otherwise, I, I don't know the, the details on there. I would like to think that they're ramping up the unemployment, uh, system so they can handle those calls. Uh, and, uh, I, uh, was originally thinking that, uh, we were looking at, uh, May. What is that, May fourth is a Monday, I believe, uh, that first, uh, pay day working in May, you know? So Friday is the May, uh, first, so, cause you know, we wanna give a couple of weeks notice and, and those sort of things. Let people work it through, talk it over to their families and that sort of thing. Uh, and.
It, so that's my concern is possibly coaching them so that they, like I said, so there's not a lapse in time. Cause I'm hearing about, I can give you an individual case that I, I just was talking to a lady about, uh, you know, she was a, uh, a bartender. She got, uh, obviously laid off when her employer closed and she filed. And then when she, she got pre-approved or approved, and when she had to answer questions, she made the mistake of. They asked, are you actively looking for work? And of course, she was honest because. Everything's closed and she said no, and then they denied her. And now she can't get back through Marvin. And what we're talking two, three weeks, the poor lady hasn't been able to get a paycheck. So I'd like to alleviate that for our employees. Uh, that, that, of doing this with.
We would send notices right away. I'm, uh, I just received a text from HR saying that. Absolutely, we would send, uh, notices to, uh, the unemployment office right away, uh, with all the individuals. So they would have a head start on that, uh, you know, obviously depends on what day they chose to, to, uh, take furlough.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Darius and Dave, I believe.
Okay, thank you. My, uh, my first question, uh, Phil answered that, um, or asked that question. My second question, out of the, uh, round figure seven hundred employees that we have, how many of those are we considering essential? Round figure number.
Uh, it's probably upwards of five hundred roughly. There's a whole lot of, uh, employees. We, uh, it's, it's, we've left it to the individual department heads and elected officials to evaluate the needs of the, and the services they provide. Uh, to provide, to, to determine that essential. Uh, it'd be difficult for, uh, for us here. Uh, and far removed from the front lines, uh, and dealing with those employees on a day-to-day basis to, uh, say you're essential and you're not essential. I can tell you that there are, uh, certain service areas where it's obvious, you know, the sheriff's department. Those people are essential, you know, dispatch, those people are essential. That, that's broad and that's easy. Whether they have administrative staff support, uh, within themselves, their departments, that they also believe is essential. Uh, that's for them to decide. Uh, at the same time, uh, parks, there's, uh, many of our positions in parks that are not essential. Uh, uh, but yeah, at the same time, we are keeping our parks open. We want people to try to get out and get some fresh air. You know, avoid the, uh, uh, well, I'll just say the mental challenges that come from being cooped up all day long. Uh, you know, they can get out, walk and, and that sort of thing, but we need people to, um, change the trash cans. And I know in my conversation recently with the parks, uh, with, uh, who was it, Kyle, he told me that actually trash cans are fuller these days, uh, because people are getting out there.
Okay, okay, those were the only two questions I had. Thank you. I have nothing further.
Thank you. Dave?
Mike, I've got a couple of questions, uh, and I think I understood you're right in part of your answer, there are answers, one of them, but. So you'd be selective if, if we offer, uh, those willing to take a furlough, it's gonna be selective by department or by job, correct?
Correct. It, you, at the end of the day, the department head elected official has to meet the needs of the essential services they provide. Uh, so it'd be, it'd be down, up to them to make the determination whether an employee could or could not take a furlough.
Secondly, those numbers that you gave us, I wrote down fifty-nine dollars, one forty-two and one seventy-eight. That's the employees' share that they pay depending on one, two or family, correct?
Yes, yes. I have a little spreadsheet I'll share with everybody too, and it'll be in the staff report for Tuesday night.
Okay, and then, Mike, you talked about, uh, doing it potentially two weeks after we vote on it, if that's what we choose to do. But if we're asking for, uh, those willing to take a voluntary, why could we not offer it to them nearly immediately? I mean, what would it take?
We can and we would intend to do that. What, what we have is, we have some employees that are non-union. And if they, they wanna take furlough the next day, uh, Wednesday, that's fine with us. We would be, we've encouraged that. Uh, we have other employees that are in the union and we, we still want to, uh, you know, try to be honoring of the union contracts and those sort of things. Uh, and in honesty, some departments are much larger and much more involved and complex, uh, with scheduling and everything else. With especially twenty-four hour departments and things, they need a little more time, uh, to work through that. But, uh, but by all means, um, if they, if someone wants to leave sooner, that'd be great.
And then I think lastly, for now, uh, do you see it? If we end up doing this on Tuesday and it did take two weeks, it's entirely possible that we could be starting it at the same time. The governor is gonna free, potentially free things back up, correct? And allow, and negate it, really?
It, it could. If, in fact, if somebody, some miracle, she said, oh, we're good, everybody go back to work. Well, then this would come to a stop right then. Uh, and if it's two weeks, well, then it's, it's two weeks. Um, we'll play the cards as they are dealt and we'll try to be flexible. Uh, and it's a two-way street. We don't want to cause harm for our people. Uh, we want them to, um, uh, can, and continue to work here and enjoy working here and provide, uh, the services that people, um, need.
So Mike, when you send out information to us, you'll include those insurance numbers you gave us, will you include budget numbers where we're short as well?
Yep, sure will.
Thank you.
Uh, Corey? Sorry, it just came to my mind, uh. One concern on the pre- insurance premiums. It just came to my mind, and you know, I don't know if you guys are familiar with labor economics, but you know, there's a thing called the distance incentive curve factor of labor economics. So of an individual that's working has to pay the premium. And the individual that takes the furlough and is essentially almost making the same as the individual. That is working. That's almost an incentive not to work, so I'm, I'm not so certain. Uh, that paying the premiums for people to take the furlough is necessarily the, the best way to go. I'd need to hear more about that. Uh, because you could essentially be punishing your people that, that stay.
Yeah.
Stuff that they consider.
There's some difficult, uh, yes, we, we've, we've experienced, uh, similar things with, uh. Uh, well, with frankly, with some folks, um, uh, who are suggesting that it's not quite fair. That other, some people are at home getting paid and while they're here working.
Yeah, I can tell you in the private sector, I, I've had people flat tell me, come and apply, and then they got approved and they're like, oh, no. Why would I come work? Like, I can make the same sitting at home. So, you know, that's something we can't control, but I, I can tell you this, offering a, an incentive to, to pay a health insurance premium. And then our employees that stay have to pay it. I, I don't know if I necessarily see that as a fair thing.
Mm-hmm. I would, uh, point out too, though, that, um, we want to, uh, to some degree entice people to take the furlough and go home. We, we say, you know, well, on average, we're probably saving, you know, well, we're saving almost eighteen hundred dollars. Um, even now, if I subtract off the other what I'm paying, so maybe it's averaging fifteen hundred dollars we're saving per paid period per employee. Um, it's a, it's a two-way street. It may very well be, uh, that we need to do something different on the other end of that, uh, but that's another discussion.
Okay. Thanks.
You're welcome. Other questions, concerns or otherwise? Uh, like I say, we're gonna, we're drafting up the staff report. I'm waiting for, hear back from some, uh, other department heads and elected officials. Um, and we hope to, in fact, I'm confident we'll be updating, uh, the materials right up to the, right up to Tuesday night as stuff trickles in. But, uh, uh, it's, it's all a good thing because in the sense that, uh, even every time we, someone reports in and says, hey, I've got a, three people who wanna do this. Great, that's three more people who will help us, uh, manage our budget, save some money, uh, and continue to be, uh, a viable service provider to our residents.
Commissioners, if you have further questions of the administration. Don't hesitate to forward them to Michael either in email or text, so that way he can put it together and update us all. Has the answers are found to your questions and we can work, work through this together as a team. Please, please, uh, ask questions. I'm gonna ask for public comment.
There's, uh, no registered users with public comment.
Thank, thank you. On to item five, there, this will be a two-parter. Uh, the initial part will be receiving, uh, Dr. Topkins resignation letter, which will take effective Monday. And then we'll be following it up with a part B with an explanation of how we replaced Dr. Topkins. Uh, in the middle of a, uh, election year. So I'd like to entertain a motion to receive Dr. Topkins' resignation.
Phil, move.
I have a motion from David, uh, support from Darius. Any other comments to the motion? Phil, did you have a question?
I was trying to make a motion, that's fine. No, sir, I don't.
Thank you, Phil. Any other questions? All in favor, please say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
I can't see some of the screens. They keep going in and out, so was that unanimous?
Might be easier to say if there's any nays.
I do. Tony, are you still here? I see your mic's turned off, but he's still on.
I'm still here. I just turned it to, uh.
Thank you.
Amanda, I got a clear shot and I saw everybody's hand come up. Phil's came up a little bit late, but everybody raised their hand from what I saw.
Okay, thank you.
With that, I'm, with that passing, the unfortunate resignation of Dr. Topkins. I'm gonna ask, uh, Michael Overton to explain what goes on. And if we have further questions, we're gonna ask our clerk. Uh, Michael?
Sure, um, when a commissioner resigns, the board has, uh, per NCL forty-six dot one-two or something like that. Uh, you have thirty days to appoint someone. It doesn't address how you go about that or anything like that. This says you have thirty days. Now, if you fail to appoint someone within thirty days of the date of their resignation, uh, it goes to a special election. Uh, and then we, we'd have to move in that direction. Uh, it's pretty straightforward. Um, and I would encourage everybody, if you know somebody who wants to be, you know, nominated.
I've got a question.
Oh, the, you mean the, well, that's true, Tuesday, to, well, first let me say this. In regard to the resignation and my reading of that, it did not actually have a date of, uh, resignation on it. I think the date on the letter itself was the fourteenth, but I have spoke with Dr. Uh, Topkins. And he tells me that, uh, he, uh, wants his resignation effective date to be Monday. Um, and that is Monday before Tuesday, which is the final day that one can register to run for the seat. So anyone out there who is interested in, uh, serving as county commissioner in that district should, uh, get in there Tuesday and see the clerk and apply before that.
Would you have multiple candidates for that position?
Oh, I'm in Corey, please. Okay, Tony, after that.
So I'm aware of at least two people that are interested in it.
I can't hear him. Can you speak up, Dory?
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm aware of a couple of people that are interested. I believe one of them wanted to make public comment here today, but, uh, uh, so maybe perhaps, I don't know. I saw there were one of the viewers, but can we be specific as to what exactly they need to do? Is Amanda in her office or is she doing things? Okay, so they can come into the county building. They can come into the county building, go to the clerk's office.
No, they need to contact, um, my office and I will set up an appointment to take care of that filing.
Is there a phone number that they could reach yet that we could say on this meeting?
Yep, they can call any number. Actually, the, um, best number probably is seven eight eight four two six eight. The other is seven eight eight four two six five. Or seven six eight six seven five nine.
And Monday's the last day they could do that, correct?
Tuesday.
Line is Tuesday at four PM.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Dave?
So if we're, uh, potentially looking at addressing filling the vacancy on Tuesday night. Would it be wise of us to ask if Amanda could reach out to any candidate that files for that seat after four o'clock? On Tuesday to let them know that and they can be provided the link to how to, uh, address during public comment. That way, all the candidates that may file will know, uh, that there's likely gonna be an appointment coming.
I can do that.
Is that the intent of the board to move Tuesday night?
I, I'll speak to my little bit of wisdom. I, I'll speak to my little bit of wisdom if somebody wants or.
Go ahead, Dave.
So I, I, I think we'd be wise to, I mean, we've got thirty days. If we don't act within thirty days, then we have to have an election. And I just don't think now is the time for us to be short on the board, even for that thirty days. Uh, if we didn't do it Tuesday, uh, we'd have to either do it at a study session, special meeting. Uh, I, I think probably in all honesty, that the thirty days, uh, falls within the time of our next meeting in May. But I, I think the timing of it is right just by virtue of the fact that the filing deadline, uh, is four o'clock on Tuesday and we meet at seven that night. And I think we're wise to, uh, pick one of the candidates that's running, to be honest with you.
Okay. I believe Tony had a question.
Yeah, Mike, I'm looking at the email that you had sent out relative to this resignation and looking specifically at the, uh, state compiled law that you had here. Item two under this law, special election scheduled for August sixth, twenty thirteen. Everything through this second paragraph talks about August sixth, twenty thirteen.
He, yeah.
Has this been updated?
Yeah, what that was, was back in, uh, two thousand thirteen, they updated that, they amended that, uh, MCL. And that window there, uh, is why that language is in there. If you go to the next section of it, it's like MCL forty-six point one-three. Uh, that's where it says, if you don't do it in thirty days, you have to have a special election.
Okay, I didn't, I didn't receive a copy of that excerpt only the, only the one that said it happened in twenty thirteen.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Other questions, concerns, uh, Corey?
Okay. So I've never been a huge fan of appointments, but in this situation, I don't think a special election would make a lot of sense with an election following it up just a few months later. But I am one for fairness and so, um, I would like an opportunity for each individual that's interested to tell us who they are, you know, what, what their background is, why they're interested in it and, and, uh, maybe have a question and answer session to be fair to everyone. So I see.
For the same, I had the, the exact same comment to share.
So, um, what makes them eligible is that they're over eighteen and have followed all of the rules and orders of the state constitution to apply, apply to vote. They have to be, uh, registered by four P M. Is the criteria we're using. Uh, that would be it. Other than that, I don't think we have, uh, any say in whether they're qualified or unqualified unless we would like to, uh, point that out.
Froze.
We will go based on the people there after they speak in public comment.
So I got a question. That's gonna be their interview process is public comment that?
Yeah, there's no, Corey, there's not an interview process for any of us.
Well, we weren't appointed.
Serve out, they'll serve out the remainder of the doc's term. And in August, they'll have a opportunity, there'll be a primary and then a general election in November. And if the voters of that district like their candidate, they'll either put him back in office or vote him out of office.
Well, yeah, but that, that's a, that was a separate issue. That's an election and, and I'd love to have an election. But if the boards collectively making a vote for an appointment, I would think it'd only make sense that we could talk to each candidate and, and hear what they're about. It's not me deciding whether they're qualified or not. It's taking a look at all, all the individuals and, and then consciously deciding which I feel would do the job best. And I think some other commissioners probably would feel similarly. I think Commissioner Williams echoed that. Can't speak for him. Thank you. So I, I would just like them to have an opportunity to present themselves to us. That, that's all in a public setting.
That's what public comment is for, sir. We can't have an open meeting as it all meet together in a room. Wish we could. We can't do that. We do it this way. We're gonna, we're doing it on Zoom Tuesday night.
I understand, but you could add an agenda item where, uh, they could be, they could give their presentation more than three minutes. That's all I'm saying. Or I, or if, if it's only public comment, then it's only public comment. It's just a suggestion, Steve.
Yeah, well, I, Corey, I think the other thing too is you put it upon the onus on the commission. Out to those people and interview them yourself. You could talk to them for three or four hours then.
That's okay.
You know, right now there are two candidates that are seated, uh, that have passed muster to be able to run for this seat. One being Earl Polesky and the other being, uh, Mr. Lozey from Concord. So those are the two people I think you need to reach out to right now, unless there's a third and a fourth that shows up on Monday. And then if there's somebody that shows up on Tuesday, then I guess they'll have their opportunity to speak Tuesday night.
For three minutes.
Well, I would have to say, yeah.
Well, the people, the, the people up for consideration for appointment is not limited to the two people that have filed to run. Any person who is, even if they've not filed the petition to run for the office, they could apply for an appointment. And they could hold it until they elect.
You're correct, Tony. If they meet all the criteria to serve as a county commissioner, you couldn't have moved into that district yesterday and run for that seat. Okay?
Correct.
Can't live in Colorado and run for that seat.
Correct.
So not everybody's eligible. That's why I started my conversation. Run for a county commission seat.
Steve, you got some kind of delay. So we missed like half of your comments when you're talking.
I don't know. I think Mike's stealing the signal.
Oh.
I, I've got a suggestion if I could.
Go ahead, Dave.
Not to heap anymore on Amanda, but just as a suggestion, a follow-up to Corey's comments. Is it possible Amanda could point anybody that has filed or does file, uh, to the email addresses for all the commissioners and encourage them to reach out to us, even our contact information? Uh, if they want to, then they're willing to.
I can do that if that's what the board wants.
I think that's a good thing.
Steve? Go ahead, Phil.
Mr. Chair. Uh, thinking back in the day when, uh, Commissioner Day passed away, I think we all had to submit a request for appointment and a, and a resume. So we knew we were, the commissioners knew we were qualified. I think there's five people that interviewed when I was selected. And that way with the applications being accepted by, say, four o'clock, Tuesday afternoon, there'd be time to, to check their qualifications a bit. Like Amanda could verify where they live and we would know if they were qualified for that district. And then call them up for public comment, the ones that had turned in their paper requesting an interview or had actually filed themselves. That's what we did like fifteen years ago.
So what's the consensus of the group? We want, we want a long resume process where we have two or three meetings and we discuss this? Do we wanna have one meeting and work from the list of the people who are willing to serve the full two years on top of the appointed time?
I personally would like to have one meeting where the individuals that are interested can come and let us know what they're all about. And then we have a follow-up meeting where we make our decision.
Mr. Chairman? Ma'am, Mr. Chairman?
I don't know what's going on, Dave. I did recognize you. Go ahead.
Okay, I didn't hear anything. Uh, so seeing how we're gonna do that meeting by Zoom, I assume. And we're doing this meeting by Zoom. Why not, uh, maybe potentially have a study session or whatever, special meeting at six? And then just flow right into the regular meeting and we can just dedicate what time we need to, uh, that topic. If that's what a majority of the commissioners want to do, the talking to these people, however many there are. Is there a fair board meeting Tuesday night as well or not?
Yes, yes, sir.
What time?
I have, uh, Sean, a mic calendar at five thirty. I assume that's a Zoom meeting. If anyone has something different, yeah, Denise just sent me a text. It's five thirty.
What time are you done by normally?
Well, um, they're, they're normally at least an hour, but, uh, with Zoom, who knows? I think it's their first meeting.
So I, I hate to make assumptions, but let's assume we have either two or four candidates. If we started a meeting at six fifteen, I gotta believe we could be done by seven. I mean, we just have to allot whatever amount of time we have to ask questions and then we could act at the seven o'clock meeting.
Hello, can you hear me, Corey?
I have a question.
Yeah. Phil.
Hear what I said?
This is Phil.
No.
Phil, can I finish with Corey?
No, everything's freezing up on the screen.
Okay.
Yes, he wasn't, I was, yeah, yes, sir. Go ahead.
Does a Tuesday night meeting at six work for you and then making the decision at seven that night?
I'd be okay with that as long as, I just wanna fair a process for everyone that's interested. That's all. So yeah, I, I can deal with that.
Phil, you had a question?
Yes, sir. Uh, Mr. Chair, I was wondering if there's any requirement to provide notice. Uh, advertise it. I mean, we, I know we wanna get this done, but are we required to provide notice? Like even if it was in the lobby downstairs, we're advertising for the, the, uh, position, if you will?
Phil, there's not, uh, you don't have to advertise that you have a seat open and you're taking applications or anything. That doesn't speak to that at all. Uh, you, uh, obviously if we're gonna have a meeting at six, we will post that we're having a public meeting. That's, that's the law. The article is already.
Mike, if I can.
The press has found out.
Big hands.
Go ahead.
Well, the, the paper did an article on it today on Doc's resignation. I don't know if they're watching the meeting now, but if they are, then I'm guessing it'll be in the article about our meeting Tuesday night.
Tony?
All right. I don't see why we need a special meeting at six. If the filling of a vacancy is on the agenda, we can at that time ask however many candidates want to put their hat on. We give them three minutes, five minutes to state their qualifications, why they want to be on the board of commissioners. The commissioners then can discuss it openly during that part of the agenda and then we can have a vote. I don't see why we need a separate meeting for that.
Did everyone hear, Tony? So do we want to set aside an agenda item to let people who are running for the six districts to be able to stand up and address us and, but we're not going to limit it to those who are running for election in August, correct? Anyone can, anyone who qualifies is gonna be able to speak, correct?
Yes.
But I, just a little bit beyond that, I think the intent is not just let them speak, but to ask questions. Tony or Corey, is that what your intent is of commissioners?
I, I think there's some, yeah, I think there's some questions that, you know, commissioners would like to ask to, to, to know a little bit more about the individuals. And it's, I, I understand we could reach out to them, but we're talking pretty, pretty quick turnaround time here. It's Friday afternoon right now. We're going into a weekend. We don't know if more people are gonna potentially, because they're just finding out. So we don't actually know who's gonna go in Monday and Tuesday. It doesn't really give me an adequate time to do a Q and A session with them prior to the meeting. And I just want everybody to have a fair chance to say, hey, this is who I am. This is why I wanna do it. This is why I would be good for Jackson County.
Tony?
If we give them whatever timeframe to present theirselves, if that presentation covers everything we wanna know and nobody has any questions, no need to ask any. If we, if there's something that they haven't brought up that is important to any of the commissioners, then they can ask a question if they choose. My opinion.
So I under, so I understand what we're gonna do. We're gonna have a special agenda item for the appointment to the sixth district commissioner. We're going to have a Q and A session with the different people who are interested in the job on this site during the meeting. Then as, after that, we're gonna vote on who the person is that we think should fill the seat, correct?
I'm good with that.
I'm good with that too.
Comfortable?
Sounds like a plan.
I am.
Darius?
Yeah, that sounds like a plan. I'm good with that.
Okay. We have another item that, uh, Dave and I have been thinking that should come before the board. Um, with everything that's been going on, uh, I'm gonna let Dave explain it. Uh, we're talking about a resolution to come Tuesday night. Dave, are you ready?
Yeah, I am. I'm just kinda winging it. I don't have any notes. So I was contacted by one of my constituents. He's a retiree and he has a lawn mowing business. And he was extremely frustrated with not being able to go perform his job. His job is a one-man operation is to go to his clients, unload his equipment, mow the lawn and leave. He has no contact with anybody and he sends them a bill. And prior to my retirement, I was hearing the same thing of, uh, construction workers that were off by themselves on a construction site, people wanting to put docks in, uh, greenhouses that can operate safely. And I, I think that, uh, we should be looking at a resolution from our county. Uh, although it may be controversial, we're not unaccustomed to that in our county when it comes to doing the right thing. And I'm hopeful that we can have a resolution to look at Tuesday night, uh, that would potentially declare some of those business, businesses as essential and lay out what the guidelines of expectation are for how they would operate. Uh, Steve and I began talking about it a week or two ago and I, I'm fully supportive of that. So hopefully we'll have support to discuss that Tuesday night and potentially vote on a resolution.
If everyone's okay with that, you can go ahead and nod. If you wanna make a comment, you can. Tony?
A resolution to do what, Dave? Declare that in Jackson County, a landscaper that mows lawn by himself is allowed to go out and do that? I mean, what, what is it a resolution to petition the governor to? I mean, what, what, is it a resolution to petition the governor to stop stepping all over our First Amendment rights, Fourth Amendment constitutional rights? And open the government back up, open industry and business back up as it should be? What's your relevant resolution? Who's it gonna be addressed to? Who's it trying to influence?
Tony, it would, I wouldn't necessarily word it exactly like that, but you've spoken to the messages that it would send. And it would be not unlike many other resolutions adopted in our county before when we have an issue that we feel strongly about. I feel strongly about this issue and with the fact that we have business people whose businesses are being crushed, that in the opinion of many, they could be out safely doing their job, following guidelines given by the federal government. And that's what the resolution hopefully will lay out. I don't have a resolution even roughed out yet. If we're inclined to do this, I'm guessing the chair would ask the administrator to draft it. And it would simply say that in our opinion, specific types of businesses are essential. And what's essential to us may not be what's essential to our governor. You know, we can debate what makes it essential, but I don't think there can be much argument that if somebody's business is about to collapse and they can go out and safely perform their job, that's an essential business.
Corey?
So in principle, I think you're spot on, Dave. I saw an individual write a similar note to one of our state senators and pretty absurd that he shut down. He has no contact with any other humans. He's a one man operation. My only concern would be not interested in us getting into a heavy civil litigation with the state of Michigan so that we certainly have thorough attorneys looking over the resolution before we would ever take any action. Pretty sure we do that, correct?
Mike, you're muted.
The reason why we brought this up today in an open meeting on Friday so that the administration can review the resolution completely before Tuesday night. As always, I'm sure the staff up here will be thorough and professional about it. Turn to us, a strongly worded resolution that we can definitely stand behind as a board and put forward an answer to the governor, the legislature and show other communities that we're leaders that we're supposed to be.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Tony.
I remember a couple of months ago when we were discussing the Second Amendment resolution. I do remember our state representative came and reminded us that we had sworn an oath to uphold the Constitution and that included the Second Amendment. And I think it's time we tell our state senators and representatives, they also took an oath to hold up, to uphold the US Constitution. And telling and impacting the First Amendment's right to freedom of religion is a constitutional violation. The First Amendment right of the freedom to assembly is a constitutional violation being imposed on us by the governor. Shutting down businesses to me is a Fourth Amendment right. They have seized property without warrant or compensation. I think I would like to take the same opportunity to remind our federal, our state representatives and senators that they swore an oath to uphold the First Amendment or the entire Constitution. And I think they need to step up and do that. It is unconstitutional that you can't go to church according to this governor's order. So I think we need to do some things here and if we're putting out a resolution, I want it to have some, some teeth on it. And I got a question. If the governor has decided that private lawn mowing companies are not allowed to go out and mow lawn, do we have county employees that their job is mowing lawn? Are they out mowing lawn? Has the governor been choosing winners and losers here?
Darius?
Thank you. So I have a couple of comments here matter. But I'll just brief and say this. I don't know if I would be in favor of going into these on this matter with resolution. We have the recommendations and guidelines that the governor. And I don't see with a resolution possible relent in that matter. I'm hoping that this does fine until we will be able to get back to this level of normalcy that individuals can go back to work. But I necessarily be putting forth the time and energy into a resolution when we have most likely without, I'd have to take a good look at the resolution, but just based off of our conversations, I wouldn't, I would not want to.
Thank you. Darius, I hate to say it, but I was only getting about every other word. I don't know if it was me or it was your connection, but kind of back to what Corey had mentioned. I'm not looking for Jackson County to sue the state of Michigan. I'm just looking to be supportive of our local businesses that can operate safely under specific guidelines, to show them support in them being able to survive. And, you know, to be honest, we're not the first ones to do this. There's other townships in Michigan that have taken the same approach. And it's true, you do see other municipalities out there. Well, they're not mowing lawns today. They're probably shoveling snow, but they've been out there doing yard work. And we could talk for an hour about the things in the order that don't make sense that you can and can't do. But again, it just comes down to, I was contacted by one of my constituent businesses. He's directly on point that he should be able to operate safely. And I want to be able to say, yes, we agree with that by passing a resolution. I'm not inviting the governor to, to be sued by us. And Tony, to your point about the different amendments that are being violated, I agree. And I think there's four lawsuits in Michigan right now that are gonna take the governor to task on those and I'm comfortable letting those run their course.
So we'll get it in the packet and be able to look at it. That's the plan.
Mike, are you shaking your head? No, you're muted.
Well, yeah, I was sitting there thinking, I'm like, the package is going out today. No, it's not done.
Well, that was a Freudian slip of the shake of your head, then?
Yeah, yeah, I was like, no, it's not done. Packet goes out today and I need a resolution. And I was kind of to some degree waiting to hear what all you're all thinking on it.
Well, but you can send the packet out with the agenda and submit the resolution to us by email Monday if need be, right? And then add it to Board Doc.
Oh, yeah, not a problem there. We'll get you a draft.
Would that?
Steve, you're not coming across at all on audio.
I'm, I mute myself and say it. Darius, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. So just make sure that I understand that last part there, right? Potentially be voting on a resolution, have just a few hours to look at, be that on Monday? Or not maybe hours, but just.
Twenty-four.
Okay, is, okay.
Okay, if we're done with the discussion on the resolution, at this time, I'd like to open it up again to public comment, if there is any public comment.
There's no public comment.
So I have just a question because I know there were some people that had contacted me that wanted to make public comment. Can we say on video how they do it? You know, Zoom's new to a lot of people and I see we've got 61 participants.
Do you want me to talk about that?
Yeah, yes, Michelle, please.
Sure, sure, sure. So in the registration links on our website and our public notice postings, it specifically says if you want to speak in public comment, that you need to register and state your intention to speak in public comment by checking the box that you want to speak. There was only one person who requested it on accident that I did follow up with, so I wasn't sure who you meant it was. On the website, they need to register.
Okay.
As a speaker for public comment.
The individual that I thought was actually one of the people that was interested in the opening on the commission seat, I believe his name's Mr. Lowsey.
They're on the meeting. I don't, if you want, I can allow that person to speak now since it is public comment time. I do see that person if you guys want to do that.
I'd at least ask him. Michelle, I would go ahead and open him up and ask him if he wants to speak, I would think. Are we at public comment again, Mr. Chair?
Michelle, can I ask a question?
Sure.
So I just now found these attendees that Corey mentioned on the side there. Are they able to raise their hand to ask a question or how does that work for public comment?
They should, they could ask, raise their hand. It's just the, the process that we adopted was that they would register via the website to state their intention to speak.
But we could have allowed them, well, when I say raise their hand, I mean electronically within Zoom. So potentially we could allow them to raise their hand. You would see it, we wouldn't, and then you'd allow them to speak, correct?
Sure.
She, it to be clear, she would see it if she's scanning all 61 participants, which means she's continually doing this, scanning those and looking for raised hands because they can come and go at any time. While she's also trying to monitor our activity here and mute and help us run through Zoom. That's why we set it up. When you log on, you need to be saying, hey, I want to speak during public comment.
Yeah, I'm not being critical of it. I just, you know, it's a new process and I didn't know how easy it is for her to see that.
Right. And, and the larger the number of participants, the more difficult it is. In this particular case here, we're up public comment. We have a commissioner who has indicated that Mr. Lowsey would like to speak. My thought would be that Michelle mute him and he can tell us if he.
So I have, I have pulled Mr. Lowsey up. He is on screen. He can, I can meet him now and he can speak for public comment.
Mr. Chairman, are you gonna limit to a certain amount of time? I assume two or three minutes?
Public comment to. It's normally, yeah, three minutes. Everybody should mute though, because we're getting a lot of feedback from everybody who's not muted.
Okay. Mr. Lowsey, I'm going to unmute you for two minutes. You're unmuted.
Okay, thank you. Hi, Board. My name is Aaron Lowsey. I'm a registered voter in Plaski Township. I've been doing essentially Al Tompkins' job of informing the municipalities in precinct six because Mr. Tompkins has been unable to attend. And I have with me a letter on official letterhead from Plaski Township recommending me to the position. I will be contacting everybody via phone call today if that's convenient. And then I will also send out emails with all the information, the contact information for the municipality heads. You contact them and get your, get their opinions of me and the work that I've done. I've been involved basically since Earl Pulaski was a state representative. And as I've gone through and watched, it's just been interesting and I would like to get involved because I feel that I bring a lot to the table. I'm a problem solver. I'm quick on my feet. And I've been involved in the Republican Party for the last two years or so. And I won last year the runner up to the Republican of the Year to Craig Pappen. But that's definitely because he puts in a lot of work and he deserved that for sure. And I'd just like your consideration in this matter. Thank you very much.
Someone else says raise their hand. Would you like me to allow them to speak as well? Okay, Eve, Earl Pulaski is on the line. I am unmuting you. Earl, you're unmuted. We can go ahead and start your time now.
I appreciate, okay, am I on? Thank you.
Yes, you are, yep.
My name is Earl Pulaski. It's my privilege to introduce myself to those members of the Board who don't know me yet. And I look forward to discussion on Tuesday night as you've described it earlier at the meeting. Quickly, my background is that I have been a county commissioner here in Jackson for four years and served six years in the state legislature, after which I spent two years as the director of the Michigan State Housing Development Authority. I think I bring a lot to the county board. My background is a certified public accountant and my experience here on the county board and at state level government. I look forward to talking with all of you this weekend and on Tuesday night. Thank you.
I see no other hands raised for public comment. Okay, there's one more. I'm gonna defer to, there's no name on this one. I don't know. Would you just let me to open it up?
I'd suggest they give their name for Amanda's sake, right? So she can record who's talking.
Okay. You're unmuted. Could you please state your name for public comment?
My name is Deborah. Deborah Kubitsky.
Okay, I turned that off, okay? That I believe was not Deborah.
I am Deborah Kubitsky.
We're, we're, guys, we're in violation of our policy. We still have for public comment here. And you can already see that we have people saying they're one person when they're not that person. I think, you know, we need to follow the rules or we'll be Zoom bombed.
So the rule that we have adopted would be, and we can put this in our public notices again, anyone who would like to speak needs to register and state their intention in the public comment section of the registration.
Public comment is closed. Commissioner comments? Corey?
Steve?
Just quickly, on the next public notice. And maybe it was on this one. I'm not sure. Is that clearly stated? It is? Thank you. That's all. That's all. I just want to make sure that everybody gets that opportunity.
Commissioner Duckham?
Yes, Steve, I input here the, the quality of this Zoom meeting was far below the ones we've had. I don't know what the problem is, but the screens are froze up and quite often you hear the person talking with no lips moving because the pictures froze. So this report on the quality out here, Michelle might wanna see and figure out what changed in this Zoom program. It was not, not really good.
David Elwell?
I just wanted to thank Michelle for the work behind the scenes on it. I'm sure it's not an easy task. And Phil, I gotta tell you that I think it's probably the connection speed of individual people that's making it seem that way. Pretty much everybody else, from my view here, the connection is good. Yours is way behind, it seems like. So probably just individual connections.
Tony Bear?
I think the jumping, the missing of conversations and voices being interrupted is caused by people who were talking, they're done, they did not mute their mic. Then the next person went on to talking. So if I don't.
So if I don't, if I'm done talking, if I don't mute my mic, if I bang my coffee cup on the table, all of a sudden that, that green box indicating who's speaking jumps over to a different person. That happened multiple times, I would see that green box jump around between persons. So I think it's important when you're done speaking, definitely mute.
Seeing none, entertain a motion to adjourn, please. Cory, Tony? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.